Welcome to the Bloomfield Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of December 13th, 2022. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the Neighborhood Association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board but is not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine your comments to the specific requests before the board. For a request to be successful, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required, and we hope that this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. Thank you, and we will now follow our agenda. So our first item for business is we have individuals that will be sworn in. Want to do those first?
Okay.
From the oath of office?
Great, thank you, Madam Chairperson. My name is Martin Brook, and I'm the Bloomfield Township Clerk. And at a meeting of the Board of Trustees last night, two members, current members of the ZBA, were reappointed to a position on the Zoning Board of Appeals, Andrea O'Donnell and Ed Ford. Your terms are continuing through the end of this year, and this oath is to swear you into office for the meetings beginning in January 2023. It's interesting, I looked at the past annual report of the ZBA, and I look because I want to highlight the public service that the members of the ZBA engage in an ongoing basis. And I want to, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, thank you for your service to the community. The ZBA performs a very important function in this community, in all communities. It's a difficult responsibility, it requires enormous amounts of hours of preparation. And to exemplify that, I looked at the 2021 annual report and noticed that on an average meeting, this board would review eighteen and a half total properties, and since many properties have multiple items up at that time, there are usually 25.8, 26 different appeal items that are entertained by the ZBA at any given meeting in a calendar year. And you meet 12 times a year, once a month, this is your last meeting this year. Interestingly enough, you have 18 items on this agenda, right on the average, so way to go. And thank you all for being here to participate in our local governance and to bring your matters to the ZBA for review. So without further ado, I especially want to thank you, thank Ed and Andrea for agreeing to do this service to the community again. It is very valuable, and I hope you find it as rewarding as the community values your service. So, if you would, please stand up and raise your hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Ed Ford.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of Michigan.
And support the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
As a member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
For the Charter Township of Bloomfield.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
For a term expiring January 1, 2026.
For a term expiring January 1, 2026.
Well, effective January 1, '23, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me, allowing me to perform this function on behalf of the community of Bloomfield Township, and I hope you have a great meeting.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening. All right, well, very nice. All right, would you take attendance?
So noted.
And may I have a motion to approve or discuss the minutes?
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. All right, so first, I'd like to mention that we do have a postponed item, and that is item number 14, that is 6506 Spruce Drive. So if anyone's here for that, that item is postponed, just want you to be aware. Okay, so we're going to get to our new items. Okay, so item number one at 3325 Baron Drive. Please state your name, address, and a summary of your request.
Hi, Jason Bryan from JCB Design and Build, addresses 801 South Adams Road, Birmingham. Here for a few different things on this particular property. First, we'll kind of just go bullet point by bullet point. First, we are proposing a cabana which is at the top of this drawing, labeled in yellow, adjacent to the pool, and that's within the setback, or outside of the setbacks rather, and it's going to have a kitchenette underneath of it, this little congregating area for the family to gather and get out of the sun. The second point here, you guys have already granted a variance to put this on the, what would be west side of the house. This was prior to my involvement, the builder had submitted for it. After addressing, visiting the site and seeing that that's right outside of the kitchen window, and there is windows all along that area, venting would be a hazard, and that's the main, like, walkway for any guests coming over through to the backyard, which would just cause a noise hindrance and whatnot. The opposite side of the house, which is the east side, that butts up to a city sidewalk and kind of just neighborhood area, so it wouldn't be impacting anybody, we'd still screen it the same way and all those sorts of things. The spa we are also wanting to elevate, which is, if you see the pool in the drawing, it's in the middle of the pool there, it'll have a spillway going into the pool, we're going to elevate that, we'd like to elevate that one foot. And then the three, they're kind of hard to see, but straight across from the spa, going to the right-hand side of this drawing, there's three spillways that would be, or three pillars that would have spillways in them spilling into the pool to just create a nice ambiance. Give your side profile of the different items there.
Are there any questions from the board?
The, just so I'm clear, the mechanical and pool equipment, which is at the lower part of the layout there, was that always in that location, or is that one of the items that got moved?
That's one of the items that got moved. Originally, it was at the location at the top of this drawing, where it's hard to see, but there's two red Xs, I just did it for sake of speed, so there'd be flip-flopping sides of the home.
Okay.
The bottom side of this drawing, which is the east side of the house, it, there's only one small window there, and it's not, we can strategically place it to not cause venting issues, and it's just a spare bedroom that's very little going to be used, where the opposite side of the house, unfortunately, wasn't thought of originally, that's the kitchen and where everyone is walking around.
Okay.
Any other question from the board? Okay, and then I'd like to open the public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Yes, please, come on up. Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening. Russell Pogatz, 4106 Water Wheel. I'm the house that's in the neighborhood, right behind it, so I'm immediately adjacent to this property. Currently, the variance was approved on the westerly side of the house, and two mechanical units have already been installed there. Now, and that's air conditioning that doesn't vent or cause any carbon monoxide issues. Now the request is to move it over to the east side of the property, and from the highlighted area in yellow, which is the focal point of the backyard, which was the kitchen, where the new equipment's going to be installed, there's no line of sight from that focal point of this yard to where that mechanical equipment is, so it's out of sight and out of sound for this resident, but it's directly in line of sight and directly in sound for me. So that's my issue tonight. As I said, the equipment's already installed. Someone came here before and requested the variance on the west side, and that was approved, and I think I made my point, so I'm good. I'd like to stay where it's at.
Anyone else like to speak to this item? Okay, would you like to address any of his comments, or?
So, right now, if we're looking at this site plan, which is to pick very well, so he's 4106, which is the neighbor to the right-hand side, I'm not sure what the address is, but the house to the left-hand side, there's only 16-foot and 16-foot in each right-of-way or setback between house to house, so a total of 32 feet. The house that was just spoken about is much further than 32 feet, unfortunately, I don't know exactly, but as far as carbon monoxide and whatnot, that's going to vent into the air. The only concern about that in regards to a window is you don't want it coming in the house, I mean, it's going to be only a couple feet from a window, and it's going to be properly screened, just as, just as the city would require.
Are there other areas you've considered?
The other areas I really don't think you guys are going to like, so that's why we kind of stuck to this one. Like I said, unfortunately, I apologize, this was already brought to the board before, and we're wasting your time on it again, but it just wasn't, unfortunately, thought about that the kitchen window is right where the equipment was approved.
Andrea, is it, is it my understanding that disregarding the air conditioners, which are not an issue as far as venting is concerned, it seems to me that it would be perhaps close to impossible to locate the generator on the westerly side of the, I think, whatever side of the house the air conditioning was originally approved on, because you can't have, you can't have the generator there with windows that open. So it would seem to me that, that while you maybe could make the argument that the air conditioning can stay on the west side, the generator would have to go on the east side. And because the generator can't be within, trying to think of what it is, what's the different distance, 12 feet, 10 feet?
I think it's 10 feet, yeah.
It can't be within 10 feet of an open window. So, put it in the front yard, I suppose, but that isn't going to work either. So the generator most likely would have to go on the easterly side, and it would make sense, if you're going to put it on the easterly side, that you put the AC on the same side, but I suppose you could have them on, one on one side and one on the other. But it would seem to me that whether or not you move the ACs, the generator has to go on the east side of the house.
Can I ask another question?
No.
I would agree with you.
Are there going to be arborvities or something that are going to screen the mechanical and pool equipment there from the neighbor just on this side of the equipment?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
We do have a sound, we do have a sound requirement.
That's correct.
Which is at the lot line, correct?
I believe it's 20 or 25 feet from the unit. Okay.
I heard something about it backs to a common area as well, did I hear?
If we want to switch back to the aerial photo, please? So that sidewalk that runs parallel to the east side of that property, right-hand side, there's a common area on both sides of that sidewalk that is not owned by my homeowner, and that constitutes probably roughly 15 feet before the properties start adjacent to the further east side.
Any other questions from the board or further discussion?
So you are planning to plant around it, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone like to make a motion or further discussion?
Where's the pool equipment going to be?
Pool equipment's going to be on that easterly side.
Along with the?
The generator.
Pool equipment has to be reasonably close to the house, okay?
Yeah, that's going to be right in that yellow blurb on the bottom there as well. Thank you, yep.
Okay.
And I, there's not, obviously, the pool is not there at the moment, so where's the pool?
There is a portion of the pool shell there, but not the portions that we're talking about changing. Raising the spa is non-existent, and the pillars are non-existent.
So the neighbor that's being affected here is not only going to look at generator equipment, but pool equipment and air conditioning units.
Not if it's screened.
Correct.
Yes, you're moving that stuff there, yet screening is obviously very important.
Yeah, no, we're definitely screening it for the neighbor along with the clients as well. As you can see, this property is going to be very well landscaped, and it's a very artsy landscape in itself, all the custom-cut patterns into the driveway and back patios, I mean, we're going to make sure everything's top-notch. So they're not going to want to see the equipment either, we're going to make sure it's very well-screened. It's already in our proposal.
So it's proposed to screen with what? I just don't see what that is.
Arborvitie.
Okay.
So it's going to form a nice sound barrier aside from the site barrier as well, once they grow in.
Thank you.
I'm, my struggle is I don't, I don't see anywhere you can put the pool equipment or the?
Well, that's what I was wondering earlier, was, you know, where were they considering it?
Yeah, I did, yeah. And you've got to have it where there's, there's no, there's no window opening, because otherwise the fumes, the exhaust from whatever it is you're putting there gets into the house, which is an issue.
It can't be deeper in the yard, I know I'm not supposed to speak, but I don't understand why it can't be deeper in the backyard, there's no way it has to be on the side.
Yeah, once we close the public hearing, we can't speak, we have to have you speak when you're up at the podium.
Could you share with me, like, what you were considering before?
So, quite honestly, we were on last month's agenda, and we spent about a month talking about it before I signed the contract, and we did the design and all that sort of thing, so unfortunately, there's not many places that it can go, and we tried to be as courteous to any neighbors as, as possible. It was approved to be on that west side, though, so that was already an approved and ready-to-go item. Worst-case scenario, we have to keep it on the west side. Ideally, we put it on the east side. We're going to have to do some very interesting things with duck work and venting, that's just going to be a even more so of a kind of hindrance to the look, if we stay on the west side.
Is that the only place you were contemplating?
The back corner of the property, but then many other things come into play there as far as side yard setbacks and how we're able to screen it, and then just functionality, long-term root systems growing into it, this and that. What it doesn't show in this drawing is this butts up to a park area that's a common area for the subdivision, and there's, right now, they're young trees, but they're going to mature over time, and they're all maples and oaks that have a very intrusive root system, especially for plumbing pipe down the road.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that you've inherited this, this project more than anything else, you're not the original builder.
So there's still a builder, I'm just the landscape, hardscape contractor, so I do all the brick pavers, retaining walls, basically take it from dirt to something that you want to move into. So the builder is still in place, they just had already requested for that west-side variance without the thought of the windows and how much fumes and things are coming off the heater.
Must not be a very good builder.
I like him, it's neither here nor there.
Obviously, he didn't think of this.
Yeah.
It would have been, I mean, I'm not a builder, but it would have been something I would have thought of.
Everyone makes the occasional whoopsie, you know?
Are there more operable windows in the kitchen?
The whole west, yeah, there's more operable windows in the kitchen.
Is it possible to fix that window?
At this point, ordering windows, especially the custom windows that are in this house, not anytime soon.
I guess, I guess one of my thoughts, and it's, it's not to pick on you, you're, you're the landscaper, I appreciate that. I'd love to have the builder here and have a chat with him, and for what it's worth, I'm delighted that you're going to be able to figure out how to screen whatever we approve, but I haven't heard, I don't know that I've heard that it's impossible to put this on the west side, because it was, the builder obviously had something in mind, and I'd like to see, you know, if he were here, we could have him chat about it, but since he's not, I'm going to assume that he knows what he's doing.
Yeah.
Although I don't think he does. And I think we will make a motion, and I'm going to break this up into two sections. I'm going to, my first motion is going to be solely for the permission request, which is the request for the spa, the cabana, and the piers. And I am going to move that that request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder, accessory structures will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to their location or their size. And that in the event this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. So that's my first motion, let's vote on that.
I have a motion in support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that motion's going to prove.
My second motion is for the dimensional variance, and with regard to the appeal at 3325 Baron Drive, for the setback variance into the easterly side yard setback, I move the variance be denied as requested based on the information presented. The applicant has not demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would not be unduly burdensome, because, in fact, I've heard that we can landscape, but I have not heard that we cannot construct. And as a consequence, no case has been made for the inability to construct this, construct it as originally approved. There will be injustice to the adjoining neighbors, because in fact, if my sound decibel level is 25 feet from, from the location of the, of the generator, for example, I may very well have to be on the neighbor's property to be able to be 25 feet from where that's located, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't see that there are unique circumstances of the property that would require us to grant this request, and I do believe that this is in fact self-created, this was originally approved for the west side of the property. Builder obviously thought he knew what he was doing, let's see if he does.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion in support. Any further discussion in that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's our request is denied. Thank you. Our next item at 128 Hamilton Road. The applicant here? Please state your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Brian Nieper, I'm the architect, 750 Hubcross. Here to represent Matt and Shawna Damon, 128 Hamilton. It's an existing 1950s colonial. The home sits in a non-conforming position with regards to the front yard setback as well, the side yard setback. We are proposing to build over top the existing footprint to add a second-floor master suite over where the garage is now, and we're also proposing to add a covered front porch. Existing home, you know, very much, the position of it very much matches the fabric of the neighborhood. Bloomfield Village has a lot, a lot of the neighborhood that's, sits closer to Maple Road, has, has these tighter front yard setbacks, so we're, we're here, we're here just because of the, that existing location of the home. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? All right, I'll close the public hearing, I'll bring it back to the board for any other further questions or discussions or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. In regard to the appeal at 128 Hamilton Road for the setback variance, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for the practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, considering the size of the lot. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors. This is a very common situation in this area of the neighborhood. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the existing floor plan or the existing structure, and is not self-created for the same reason. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion in support. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Request is approved. All right, next we have applicant at 345 North Will, Williamsberry Road.
It's easy for you to say.
I know, I got tongue-tied inside my mask.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Blythe Moran, this is Matt Moran, and we are requesting three feet additional, wait, well, let me back up, we're placing a, an addition of a sunroom on the back of our family room, and, there you go, along with a additional master suite on the other side of the house. But the problem is with the sunroom, we have, we had the drawing, see the fireplace right there? That is encroaching into the room by two and a half feet, making the, the structure that we are planning to be really dysfunctional. You can't put two couches, otherwise the couches will be outside the room. And so we're asking for an additional three feet so that we can fit furniture in the room.
Furniture, novel concept.
That's the problem right there, the, the fireplace that's going into the, where the sunroom would be.
Any questions from the board? All right, I'd like to open for the public hearing, anyone like to speak to this item? No, okay, I'll close the public hearing, I'd like to bring it back to the board for any further questions or discussion or even a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make another motion, if that's okay?
Sure.
With regard to the appeal at 345 North Williamsberry Road, for the dimensional variance of three and a half, of three feet into the required 35-foot rear yard setback. of three and a half, of three feet into the required 35-foot rear yard setback, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for the practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the current setbacks and the current structure of the home. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors, as this is very harmonious with other homes in the area. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated. Once again, given to the placement and the, the excessive setbacks currently there, and is not self-created. If approved, the application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion in support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations. You'll be able to put a couch there.
Thank you. How we can have furniture?
Thank you.
Have a good evening. So next, we have 1099 North Cranbrook Road.
Good evening. Matt Mosier, representing the homeowners at 1099 North Cranbrook Road. We just have one request tonight, and that's for a pool safety fence, or before you tonight because the rear yard in this circumstance is technically a secondary front yard. Excuse me, it's a corner lot. We worked with the village on something that was appealing to them. And as you probably are aware, if this was a normal backyard, we could go route to the lot lines. But I think it's pretty self-explanatory. There's obviously plenty of proposed evergreen screening, so this won't be visible. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
I'd be willing to make a motion.
Okay, we're not opening a public hearing first.
Oh, sorry.
No problem. Anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. You can make a motion.
Okay, great. Well, let's see. In regard to the appeal at 1099 North Cranbrook Road, for a variance for a pool fence and the location of said fence, given the location on the yard, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of, of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because there's definitely a safety need for the metal pool fence. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that there will be proper screening used for this purpose. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the, the yard, the, the lot and the way it's laid out. And it's not self-created due to the current existing nature of the structure. If this is approved, all, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the fence from the public view.
Support.
I have a motion in support. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, we have 1298 Winchcombe Road.
I'm John Childs. I reside at 1298 Winchcombe Drive with Tessa, the homeowner. Just seeking approval for a 12 by 16 yard shed. It'd be within all ordinances.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
What's the height of the shed again?
Approximately 11 and a half feet. Sidewall, six feet, but it's like a gambrel roof, like a Dutch barn. So it's approximately 11 and a half feet.
And sheds are not uncommon in your neighborhood?
There's seven, at least seven down my street.
Of the same size?
One, one's house down, yes, about the same size. Some of them are a little bit smaller. I know in October, somebody in my neighborhood got one approved, the same size as this one, 12 by 16, back in October. I've talked to my neighbors at 1286 and 1310 Winchcombe. They're verbally okay with it. I doubt they sent any comments in, but I spoke to them in the yard.
Any other questions from the board?
So it's on the, where, again, is the shed located?
Southwest corner, the back, the bottom left of that lot.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, then I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
I can make a motion. In regard to the appeal at 1298 Winchcombe, for the accessory structure shed, I move the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section 42-7.6 standards because the size of the, of the accessory structure is compatible with the adjoining properties, and also that the structure is with, is outside the minimum setbacks of the property. If, if this is approved, the applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreens must be planted around to screen the shed from public view.
Support. Okay, I have a motion in support. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Congratulations. Your request is approved. The next item, 2959 Turtle Pond Court.
Good evening. My name is Matt Oligarzak with Motor City Landscaping, representing Mr. and Mrs. Abicater at 2959 Turtle Pond Court. We were in front of the board previously and got approval for the sports court and a ball containment system. The ball containment system was approved at four linear foot. And looks like there was a change in this and it was installed at 10 linear foot. We're requesting a variance for this sports court containment system, which is in the back of the home. You can see by the photo that we did do screening around the entire sports court. The back of this property backs up to a pond, which you could, you can see the, the back of the property from the adjacent subdivision, which is only along a road. So really, the only view are properties that are parallel with the home itself. And both sides of the home and the back of the sports court, where there's a good photo, you can see we did some arborvities along the back. And we did, there's existing, you know, 20, 30-foot tall evergreens adjacent to the sports court. And right behind the house, there is a pond, so there's no neighbor behind them. Unfortunately, the, the four-foot ball containment system was increased due to, due to sports and play, which was not approved. So I'm here asking for that approval.
I'm trying to understand how, knowing you need it to be approved for five foot and received it, that 10-foot was installed. I'm, I'm struggling to understand how that occurs.
So am I.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any other questions or discussion or our motion.
So sharing Bob's concern, I mean, an exception was granted to make it not four feet, but five foot. And then a 10-foot fence isn't, is constructed. I mean, why was this even reviewed with us? It was, if it was going to be instantly disregarded?
It was not meant to be disregarded. The sports court company and the homeowner must have talked, and then the larger fence was installed. We had on the original drawings and the original specification, I believe it was a four-foot fence, not a five-foot. That was for a containment system around the sports court.
Okay, and they did not, they took the approval, from my hearing, they didn't contest the four-foot and say, no, that won't work for us. So whether it's four foot or five foot, they gave.
It doesn't matter. It's over, yeah, it's over, it's over and beyond.
It was approved at five.
Correct.
Exactly. Previously approved at five, okay.
All right, I'm, 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 see if I get support on this. Madam Chair, with regard to the request for dimensional variance at 2959 Turtle Pond Court, I'm going to move that the appeal be, excuse me, I'm going to move that the variance be denied as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated none of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would not appear to be unduly burdensome because they originally thought five foot would be approved, would be sufficient. It was approved and they installed 10. I have no reason why it needed to be 10. You could certainly install arborvitie if you're concerned about it going into the pond. You just need to make sure they're tall arborvitie. There will be injustice to the adjoining neighbors because regardless of how you screen it, the fact of the matter is, it is something that is visible to anybody who's a neighbor. And since the pond is common area for the condominium complex there, would certainly, as you can see, people could walk across the back. It would be something that would be visible, even if it were attempts to make it well-screened occurred. I don't, I don't understand the, I don't understand that there are any unique circumstances to the property that we require this. In fact, when the homeowner originally applied, they applied for five foot, we granted five foot. I don't understand how five turns into 10, which to me seems to be entirely self-created. And with that having been said, the existing fence, if this motion is approved, the existing mesh fence must be removed or relocated. I take that back. The existing mesh fence must be removed or shortened to five feet within 30 days of approval of the meeting minutes.
Support.
I have a motion in support. There's no further discussion?
Could I make one comment or no? Like, um, there are other fences within the community that are at a 10-foot height.
I'm, I'm aware.
So we have to take down the fence and then re, then apply for a 10-foot fence since other neighbors and adjacent properties have?
Because every property is, because every property is, I'm sorry, I'm not the chair. Please.
I will say.
I'm just, I'm just curious because.
Every property is looked at individually.
We've done multiple sports courts in the community and they have taller fencing.
Right, I think a lot of times.
So yes, we did, we did apply for a lower fence, and they did install a higher fence, but being that other fences in the community were higher. So there was a discrepancy in what we applied for within the height.
Right.
So here's, we're, but we're deliberating on a motion. We are not discussing this with the applicant.
I understand that. But I guess I'm, I'm asking, where do we go from here if the homeowner wants that higher fence? Do I take it down and reapply like I did the original time?
That would, that's up to Andrea to answer. I don't, I, we just sit here and.
In order for you to reapply, it has to be something that would be substantially different than what was denied. So to come back and apply for the same thing wouldn't qualify as something being substantially different.
But I guess we're, we're failing the motion on, the fence was applied at, at a certain height and it's higher. So you're saying that it's, it's denied because there is, the neighbors do not see it, it's blocked, it's private, just like the other properties within the sub. So I, I hear that we're being denied because we put it in at this height and it's at this height. How do we go back to applying to have the higher fence installed?
Do it right the first time.
I understand that.
Sometimes you can't fix things.
I was just gonna say, every house is, is considered based on its own circumstances and the circumstances of its immediate neighbors, the feedback from the association. So every single decision of, of, of the board by design is a one-off.
Correct. We did get approval from the HOA on this.
I'm, I'm not pleased that I'm making this motion. It's not something that I like to do. I, anybody who's been here frequently would know that I would much prefer to grant variances than not. But when somebody comes in and applies for a five-foot variance and it's granted, which is actually higher than what is allowed, which is four feet, and installs 10 feet disregarding what was approved, I don't have a whole lot of sympathy for the problem.
If 10 feet had been granted, I guarantee one of us would have said that plantings as tall as 10 feet would be required. From the drawing there, from the pictures there, clearly the plantings were for five feet or maybe even a little less.
So those plantings, actually, there is a retention wall, and those plants are closer to seven foot tall?
It just doesn't cover.
But they need to be, they need to be whatever the height is to make them sufficiently able to block the view. So if there's a retaining wall, they might need to be 13 feet high.
They'd be 18 foot.
And support to the fact that you knew you had five feet, it was planned on five feet. That's what the board approved. You know, if we go back on our word, then anybody, everybody can do it.
So I understand that.
So how can you fix it? I'm not sure you can. And, and that's, that's something that I'm not pleased with. I wish, you know what? I'm going to make my motion without prejudice. That would allow them to reapply with some minor tweaking as opposed.
Something different than what has been previously denied.
All right, so then, then let me, let me, let me add to my motion that it is without prejudice, which would allow the individual to reapply with certain additional considerations being brought before the board so that the board might find it something we could approve. Okay, that I think is the best I can do in getting you where you want to go, and yet us needing to go where we need to go.
Or table it.
Or table it. Well, table it would still not solve the problem.
Okay, you're right. What?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking it'd come back at 10, but show a, show 18-foot arborvitie across the back.
Something consistent.
Yeah, I've, I sold, I've sold a property on the, on the pond. I know exactly where this is.
We had an open motion on the table, I think. Do we have to?
We have a motion on the table. Motion's without prejudice, which means that it could be approved, the request be denied, but they'd be able to come back with a different, with a similar appeal than what has currently been.
So to refresh my mind, the motion is to deny, but it is without prejudice, giving them the ability to retain.
Yes.
Support.
For the amended motion, yes.
You support the amended? Okay, all right. So we have a motion in support. Without further discussion or questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So you know that the motion's been denied. Do you understand?
I do understand. Thank you very much for your, for the board's time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. The next item, number six, 4121 Antique Lane. Hello?
Hello, I'm Kendall Glock. I'm at 4121 Antique Lane regarding a pre-existing invisible dog fence. It was installed by a prior owner of the property.
The good news is it doesn't require evergreen screening.
Exactly.
I have no questions.
Any questions from the board? And I'll open the public hearing. Would anyone like, okay, please come up. Please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Robert VanderWurf, and this is my wife, Kelly Kneer. We live at 4143 Antique Lane. We are about 15 feet down from the bottom red line there. That's where our house is. So we, we just feel that fence is, is way too close. You know, I, I work from home 90% of the time now, and it sure looked to me like a, a fence was installed December of 2020, an electric fence. It sure looked like a guy was, had his trench rained and he was going, going around the lot. So it seemed like it's more of a recent fence to us.
And I don't think that the variance that, that is in place was approved by the zoning board, whether it was the existing owner or the prior owner. And so, yeah, it is extremely close to our. And so, yeah, it is extremely close to our home and we feel that an exception should not be made.
It's, I guess in my mind, a pet's behavior is very subjective to, to the owner and with us being right so close, we're going to be at, at how that owner feels their, their pet's behavior is acceptable. And, and I did also send a couple of videos of examples where I'm almost at the far end, other end of my yard and, and there's a behavior issue. And there's another video from just after last Christmas last year, I was putting away Christmas decorations and, and again, a behavior issue where the, the pet is so close to our house, it could hear me inside my house. So we, we would really like to see this denied.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
Do I get to speak more?
Okay. Yes, you can address any of the comments that were made.
Yes, so the fence was installed by a prior owner that was, one of the reasons I actually got a dog from my girls is, we saw that there was an electric fence already in place. I have a yellow lab, she's a family dog. She does not like to be yelled at and called a stupid dog by people she doesn't know. Our subdivision is very family-friendly, very dog-friendly. I'm not the only homeowner in our subdivision that has an invisible fence allowing the dogs to go in the front and side yard. And again, it was installed by a prior owner. It was not, when they saw the digging up, they were checking the wires to make sure it was not broken and making sure that it was connected properly.
How far from the lot line is it now?
Pardon?
How far from your rear lot line is it right now?
It is close, it does, the warning got, so she can't go that far, but the warning is about four and a half feet from?
Where's the, do you know where the actual fence is in relation to your?
Yeah, the red line is the fence. So the black line, I guess, is my technical property and then the other parts, the easement.
And how many feet from the house is that, do you know?
The easement, no.
No, I meant like, I'm just trying to find out, for example, is the fence 10 feet from your house and six feet from the lot line? Like how deep is your backyard?
My backyard is about, at the closest point, about 12 feet away from their yard.
Okay, so your house is, I mean, to be 25 feet from your rear line is essentially impossible because the dog couldn't go in the backyard. Is that the case?
Yes.
This is, this is an odd, not only is it an odd-shaped property, it's got dual frontage and the houses, the houses configured strangely on the lot as well.
I agree, so like that one corner, it already encroaches into the setback.
Right.
The rear setback. So I mean, I would have to assume that a dog should be able to use the backyard.
Or a yard, a yard.
Some yard, yeah.
To some, to some capacity, yeah.
And the neighbor of concern is at 4143?
I guess.
That's what I wrote down.
Yeah. Okay.
In that house, the two houses are, the proximity of each house, of the houses to each other is unusual, just looking at the rest of the houses in that area.
Would you move it back at all and still be able to use your backyard?
I don't think so. And I'm not the only owner in the subdivision that this other neighbor has complained about with their invisible fence.
I'm just trying to see if there's any solution that would work for you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I would grant it.
And she's already trained with the fence. She doesn't even need the collar anymore, so she wears it, but she doesn't need it.
All right, let me, let me take a stab at this. Madam Chair, with regard to the requests at 4121 Antique Lane, a request for dimensional variance and a permission request. I'm going to deal with the permission request first, which is for the existing dog containment fence. I'm going to move that the application be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as families frequently have pets that require some kind of containment. The invisible fence would certainly be, is far more attractive than an actual fence, fence, and, which would end up most likely being in the same location, if not even closer to the lot line. And with that having been said, moving on to the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance, be unduly burdensome and because of the, and this all ties together, the unique circumstance of the property, because of the, the dual frontage, the way the house sits on the lot is unusual. It is not square to one side or the other, but in fact angular across the property and as a consequence moves it very close to the, the lot lines, to the, looks like to the south. Injustice of the adjoining neighbors, the invisible fence is, does not produce an injustice. In fact, it's far more appealing than an actual physical fence would provide. Unique circumstance of the property, I think, have been demonstrated because of how the property is situ, the house is situated on the property and the dual frontage of the property, neither of which has been self-created by the homeowner. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing invisible fence dog enclosure.
Support.
I have a motion of support. Without further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agreed, yeah. Request is approved. Okay, next item, 6650 Oaks Hills Drive.
So my name is Oliver Reich, representing, here with Architect of Southeast Michigan, representing the Covens family in 6650 Oak Hills Drive. So we would like to build a deck that is 22 feet out, 19 feet wide, in combination with a pavilion built on top of it, 16 by 16 feet and, exactly, these are our renders, and a patio 22 feet out in 25, 20 feet wide for this homeowner. So I'm, I'm today here because, I mean, it's certainly required to see the zoning board of appeals for any accessory structures. However, we are also applying, I'm applying for one variance and that is because as of now, we are planning to make the pavilion one foot taller than allowed by your zoning ordinance, as per which accessory structure must not be taller than 14 feet above grade. We are looking to make the peak of the roof 15 feet and that is driven by, if you don't mind, could we possibly go back to the 3D render because I think that nicely shows the, the, yeah, this one here. So and that is driven by the bumball that you see here behind which the, the kitchen is located. And so we had to align the roof beam with the, with the header above the, the sliding door coming out of the kitchen. If we would have built or if we would have designed the pavilion to be any lower, the homeowners would have looked straight at the roof beam, which would not have been practical at all. Overall, the pitch of the roof also goes, complements the, the existing design of the, of the home. And also, as, as we see on the, as people see on the later pictures, this entire structure is, for one, not visible at all from the street. From the, yeah, from, from this perspective, from the right side, it's going to be entirely hidden by the roof of the garage. So the structure will only be barely visible by the, by the neighbors to the left side of that building. And even there, it's, it's almost out of sight. So, but that's the variance we are applying for.
I didn't see that variance on here.
So it's a permission request and a dimensional variance?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's not on the agenda. Be sure that the dimensional variance is caught.
Okay, so we should add it.
Sorry about that, just got missed on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I was communicating regarding the variance, I was communicating with, in fact, with you?
No, you're, you're accurate. I just didn't add it on the agenda, that's why they're asking. No, it's, you're right, you're accurate.
It's the variance in height.
Correct. One foot over because on a raised?
Permission to have it, then a one-foot variance.
Got it. Any questions from the board?
Does that height measure from grade or from the steps?
Grade.
The grade. Is the pitch of the, the structure the same, the roof pitch the same as the roof pitch of the house?
It's already a little bit shallower, so we did that with the intent to, to stay as low as possible with the peak. So we're currently planning for four and 12, if I remember correctly. And we really didn't want to go any shallower, otherwise it would have, would have looked really weird and so, yeah.
It's already high off the ground to begin with, so?
Yeah, and that was necessary in order to not obstruct the view from the kitchen.
Understood.
So the underside of the roof beam is pretty much flush with the, with the top of the sliding door coming out of the kitchen. In fact, I think it's, it's even a few inches below that. And the gutter, the height of the gutter matches the gutters on the, on the garage.
Did you ever consider reducing the pitch so that it would meet the 14-foot height since it's off the ground already a few steps?
I mean, if you, so that, that 3D render is representing it, it would be a possibility, but it would certainly not please the homeowner because then it would look really strange next to the garage. Because if you're in the backyard and you're looking at the pavilion, then you have one roof that is relative, with relatively shallow pitch and right behind that, that pretty steep pitch, the, the pretty steep pitch of the garage, so. And it would also not help us much, I mean, if you run the numbers, so it's only, the entire porch is only 16 feet wide, so we have the rafters spanning eight, eight feet. So even if we would, even if you would lower it from four and 12 to three and 12, that would lower the pitch or the height of, the height of the peak by only eight inches. So we would still be a little bit above that. And so, so I think it's, for practical purposes, not really possible to, to lower the pitch any further.
Okay. Do you have questions? Okay, I'll have to open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any other questions or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. In regard to the, the permission request at 6650 Oak Hills Drive for the accessory structure, as well as the dimensional variance request of one feet in height from grade at the same address location, I move that the, both requests be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because for the permission request, the size of the accessory structure is compatible with adjoining properties based on the neighborhood as well as the current property. Further, compliance with the strict, strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that the homeowner should be able to see out their kitchen without looking at the, the beam. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of it is not very visible from the street. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the existing floor plan and the limitations it has, and it is not self-created since it's, the home is currently built with the slopes as it is. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction and additional evergreen screening may be required to screen the pergola from public view.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion of support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, next item, number eight, 2840 Turtle Grove Court. The applicant here? Oh, there he is, I didn't see you.
Good evening again. Good evening. My name is Matt Olojarzak with Motor City Landscaping, representing Mr. and Mrs. Abraham at 2840 Turtle Grove Court. I noticed here there are only two items, but we, we submitted, everything in yellow was submitted, so I'm not sure if?
Holy cow.
If that was looked over or?
Which items were over, admitted? They probably don't require zoning board approval.
Thank you very much for that clarification. So here we have two items. We have a three-foot by three-foot by five-foot high water feature that the homeowner would like to put in the backyard to view out of the family room window. And they are looking for a 10-foot by 16-foot swim spa with a four-foot barrier fence and that fence is four-foot that we're looking to get permission on.
Not 10.
I just, there's no reason to put a 10-foot fence up here. There's no balls being thrown around, so that is, that is for sure a four-foot barrier We can all laugh at our mistakes.
No worries.
Will.
Yeah, just to clarify, it's noted in your application that the piers and the firepit and the kitchen that are permitted in accordance with the ordinance amendment. So just to clarify that those don't require approval.
Yep.
All right, any questions from the board? Then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? We've got a quiet crowd tonight. All right, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for any other discussion or if anyone's ready to make a motion.
Madam Chair, with regard to the request at 2840 Turtle Grove Court, dimensional variance request, request, and a request, permission request. Dealing with the permission request first, I would move that it be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. Size, excuse me, the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of its location or size. And I would go on to move that the dimensional variance also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome and would, would I think restrict the quiet enjoyment of the property by the homeowner. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. In fact, this appears to be something that's going to be very well received by the community. The unique circumstances of the property are such that they do have a pool, you've got to put stuff in certain places. Sometimes this is just where they have to go for that to be accommodated. And if you look at the lot, you can certainly see that it is not what we would consider a standard size or configuration, which certainly is not self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and additional evergreen screening is going to be required at the perimeter or at the installation of the, of the items that we're approving here, simply so that they are screened from public view.
Support.
Okay, I have motion and support. Without further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, next item, number nine, 5611 Shadow Lane.
Good evening, Jim Parker, homeowner at 5611 Shadow Lane. As you can see here, there's a small, my home is located on Gilbert Lake, at the shoreline. There's a small concrete pad that was installed by a prior homeowner decades ago. And I would like to remove that pad. It extends down into the water, almost as if it was like an old, very small, a little boat ramp. boat ramp. I think maybe they pulled a swim raft in and out onto it. I'd like to, it's steep and slippery and a hazard and an ecological little dead zone there, because it's just concrete. I'd like to remove that pad and install native species, natural vegetation, restore it to the shoreline. The rest of the shoreline is a natural-looking shoreline with stones and natural vegetation. I'd just like to take up essentially that area there and replace it. It will also create a bit more of a buffer zone between my lawn and the water, which I think will help improve the ecology of the lake and prevent runoff.
That's not the Contemporary, is it? No, that's further down.
The Contemporary is further, two doors down.
Dennis Robman used to live there.
Yep.
Oh, really? Interesting.
Those walls could speak.
Oh, you don't want to hear it.
My proposal is not to build anything or add anything to that, it's to remove a unnatural feature that was not self-created and instead improve the area with a shoreline restoration.
Any questions from the board? All right, open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, no takers. All right, close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
This required DQ.
Um, yeah, the applicant has already applied for the Eagle permit. Sorry. Yeah, the applicant has already applied to the state, as well as I know that they're working with the township for our floodplain and wetland permitting process as well. So this is just one of the other requirements for approval to do the work.
Madam Chair, I'll take this motion again.
Sure.
With regard to the appeal at 5611 Shadow Lane for the variance required to essentially remove the water item, is what I'm going to call it. I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. This resident is trying to preserve the wetlands and improve them. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the same. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given that this item has been there for a while, and it probably is best for it to be removed, and it's not self-created for the same reason. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion in support. Without any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted.
Thanks so much.
All right, next item, number 10, 55, yeah, 5505 Wing Lake Road. The applicant here?
Madam Chair, I would move this be put to the end of the agenda. Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll move it to the bottom of the agenda. So, number 11 gets moved up, 3897 South Miller Way.
Good evening. My name is Trevor Colero with Scavi Detroit.
I have something about the item to add.
Are you the applicant?
No, I'm not the applicant.
Right, the applicant, it doesn't appear to be here, did, so we...
I think we could listen.
You want to take public comment on it? Since, you wanted to make a public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, we would want to respect.
Excuse us, sir.
Well, it was seen, well, what do you do if he offers a public comment and the applicant shows up at by the end of the meeting? He then doesn't have an opportunity to rebut.
That's true.
So, my observation, and I, it's not that you won't get your opportunity to speak, it's just that...
We have to get the case of the applicant.
When it's actually presented, yes.
There's a question of due process that just needs to be preserved.
You'll absolutely have an opportunity once it's presented.
I understand, motion's been made to put this to the end of the agenda.
Well, can we make, can we amend the motion and say if the applicant comes before the end of the agenda, will?
I think it's pertinent that he be given a chance to speak to it as it's being discussed by the board. I think that's important, so.
That would be my thought. As much as I'm sure you'd like to go home earlier than later, you'll still have your opportunity.
I'd like to, I'd like to address the board.
You will.
Yep.
But not now.
Once the item comes up.
Why, wait for the end?
Yeah, because there's no item to speak to because it's not being seen by the board. So, we couldn't take public comment on something that's not being presented to the board for review.
Your comment is on the applicant's motion, I mean, item in case. And so, your comments would be related to that and without the applicant here. So what we're hoping is that the applicant will show up, and we will discuss it, and then you'll have your opportunity.
Okay.
Okay.
Hello. My name is Trevor Colero with Scavi Detroit. I'm here on behalf of my client, Michael and Rebecca Sokol, at 3897 South Miller Way. We are proposing to build a pergola or louvered roof system that actually will, it's that red outlined area, actually going in a bit of a courtyard in the existing home. So it will not project past the existing house in any direction, and it's to be used as sort of a covered outdoor entertainment space.
Any questions from the board? Okay, open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, well, then I'll bring it back to the board for any discussion or motion.
Madam Chair, I can make a motion.
Great.
In regard to the appeal at 3897 South Miller Way Road for the accessory structure attached to the house, I move the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the structure is harmonious with the neighborhood, given the fact that it's tucked into an existing part of the house, and it meets all setback requirements.
Support.
Do you have a motion in support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This question's granted.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item number 12, 5015 Brookdale Road.
My name's Richard Hodek. I'm with the Chris and Metz-Andries out of Plymouth, Michigan, speaking on behalf of Jeff and Jennifer Staple, our client. We're here tonight to seek approval for three different items at this point. One being a pool, a sport court located in the side yard, and also is a fire pit in the backyard. I'll speak to the first item. One of the first things is I understand that this isn't located in the side yard. However, some of the hardships that we're having to deal with is that the house was built well before the client took ownership of the home. It wasn't, it was, it is what it was. And the house is set substantially further back from any other setback requirements. So it really minimized the whole backyard as a usable space, is one of the items. There's a lot of large, if you could go to some of the photos, there's some large existing trees that are around the north property line that screen the property, so we don't want to disturb any of those trees. And then there's also a generator and a transformer in the backyard, which would cause substantial cost to move all those. So it really didn't fit well to, and also there's an existing pond, coig pond that they have in the back. So there's a desire to use the kind of remaining open space in that back, what we call the backyard, if you want, the side yard issue, area, to locate the pool and the courts. One of the things that we would like to do is that all of the areas would be screened with large evergreens. There is a four-foot pool fence that would be around the property, as shown. Understanding one of the items that came up earlier with regards to the height of the fence, I wanted to ask the question was, understanding that issue, is it appropriate or could we ask for a, an option to increase the height only at the sport court to a higher height at this time?
That was not properly noticed.
Okay, all right, so just a question. So right now it's a four-foot fence, and then it would be located within a six-foot height hedge around the sport court for screening. So from the street views, it wouldn't be visible at all, or from the adjoining properties, there's already a large, large number of large evergreens there, and this would be additionally screened.
I have no question.
Any questions from the board? I'll open the public hearing. Anyone here to speak to this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, excuse me, Madam Chair, with request, with regard to the permission request and request for dimensional variance at 5015 Brookdale Drive, Brookdale Road, dealing with the permission request, first, I would move that the permission request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards, excuse me, compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. Location of the accessory structures will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of their location, the screening, and their use. With that having been said, the dimensional variance, I would move it also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with, demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. In fact, you could argue that because this is a corner lot, it has no rear yard, which would make compliance impossible, not just difficult. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, again, because of the location and the screening. Unique circumstances of the property are, in fact, the site of the property, which certainly is not something that is self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen screening may be required along whatever road that is.
Dryden.
Dryden, my apologies, thank you, I couldn't see it. Along Dryden to screen it from public view. No lighting is permitted for the sports court, and the sports court is only to be utilized during daytime, daylight hours.
Just, if I could make one clarification, if you look at the, show up the landscape plan, there are a lot of existing vegetation, so I don't know that...
Yeah, and, yeah, I'm, I think you're fine. I just want to make sure.
Support. Okay, I have a motion in support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
You too.
Thank you. All right, next item, number 13, 7178 Lasha Road.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. My name is Stacy Morgan of Exigent Design and Build, on behalf of Genevieve Jamil of 7178 Lasha Road. We're here requesting a variance for a sport court, 21 feet off the south end of the property line and 35 feet off the west end of the property line. What we have already, we already have privacy vegetation of arborvitae's on the south side of the property, along with the east side of the property there. And we will be having a sports net on the back on the west side of the sport court in order to assure that there will be no problems with the neighbors.
Nice and succinct. I like that.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
What kind of sports net were you talking about?
This will be a, it's going to be a 12 by 50, so 12 feet high, 50 feet long, to go ahead and go along the backside of the sport court. Not metal at all, it's just going to be a regular tightly woven fabric.
Was that noticed?
In the conversations I had with the applicant, my understanding is there is an existing fence that was around the perimeter of the property?
Yes, ma'am.
Therefore, there was no plan, whoever I spoke with, to have the mesh fencing? So this is new?
Yeah, so we've already actually bid for it. It's already a part of our agreement with the homeowner, so that is something that I'm not sure that was actually spoken of, but it is accounted for.
Okay.
But along with the four-foot fence.
Correct. So that would have to be re-noticed.
Okay. All right.
So tonight we can talk about the permission request for these items.
Because this is all a package, he may want to have us postpone this until it's properly noticed, because otherwise, we could approve, we could approve the non-illuminated sports court and not approve the mesh fencing that's already been paid for.
That's true.
In any event that the, that the net is completely fine, we are able to go ahead and credit that to the homeowner for additional screening of arborvitae's.
Okay, so we can go ahead, and let's go ahead and approve the sports court, and they'll deal with the cost of them.
Do you think that's the best?
I don't know that it matters.
That's not on here right now at all.
It's not on here, so we can't hear, we could either hear what's here...
Right.
And hear the sport, hear the mesh fencing later, or we can wait and hear the whole thing another time when I have a headache and can't be here.
It might be best to bring it back when you've got the whole package, it's been properly noticed and everything like that, that we, it's a, we'll have a comprehensive package and we provide you a comprehensive decision.
Understood.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion then that we postpone this until the January meeting?
We could probably get it on the January 10th agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a headache that day.
Contact our department.
Okay. We have support for a motion.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So motion to postpone, okay.
14 is postponed.
All right, 14 is postponed. So item number 15, 5368 South Woodlands Estates Drive.
Good evening to the board. My name's Alan Hordes. I'm here on behalf of the homeowners. We're here today to ask for a variance, eight-foot, exactly seven and a half foot on the west side rear yard setback. The neighborhood has a 25-foot rear yard setback. The city R2 zoning has a 35-foot rear yard setback, so we're trying to build the two matching additions off the rear of the home, as shown right there. They're just for the second story only. We're coming out seven feet and going across 25 feet on the addition on the master bedroom side. The other side is seven by, I think, 15 feet, so. We have some pictures there showing the front of the house. If you look at the rear pictures of the rear of the house, we're going to match the existing structure. There's an existing railing system that comes out five feet. There's some hardscape and retaining walls in the back that probably come out 25 feet. And then that picture right there, the north to east view, you can see the ladders laying there, they'll stick out about seven feet. So if you can visualize the addition in photograph B and E above it, we're going to come out just about 24 inches past where that existing deck sticks out from the rear of the house.
Okay.
We spoke to the neighbors, I think, believe, I just want to put it on the record, there was concern about, the neighbor on the south side about drainage. The homeowner has agreed to do whatever is necessary to take care of any drainage issues. He issued a letter to the homeowner and signed it stating he would put some additional earth berm landscaping or drain tile on that side. We have homeowner association approval, and I think that's, covers everything we're asking for. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? All right, then I'll take it to the public. Does anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, with regard to the dimensional variance at 5368 South Woodlands Estates Drive, I would move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, in fact, would create some functional obsolescence for what's been proposed at the point of it's actually being created. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors. In fact, we have subdivision approval. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, and again, I think the site of the property to that, almost a canal, almost like aperture, I have no other way to describe it, certainly is unique, and I think they've done a good job to mitigate how this addition will... Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, and again, I think the, the site of the property to that, almost a canal, almost like aperture, I have no other way to describe it, certainly is unique, and I think they've done a good job to mitigate how this addition will be, will impact the surrounding community, none of which is self-created, this is, again, an unusual lot, and I think frankly, they've done a pretty good job trying to accomplish what they're, what they're attempting to do, and applaud them for their effort. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion of support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Good evening, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, item number 16, 5385 Long Meadow Road.
Hi, my name is Jackie Clark, I'm representing the homeowners Mr. and Mrs. Schmidt at 5385 Long Meadow Road, proposing or looking for approval for a temporary ice rink, while within the setbacks, all adjacent properties are fully screened.
No questions.
Questions, all right, then I'll open the public hearing, anyone like to speak to this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, with regard to the permission request at 5385 Long Meadow, I would move that the permission request be approved as submitted, applicant must, has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property because of where it's located, how it is screened, and the fact that it is, in fact, only temporary. Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to construction, use of the ice rink is limited to daytime daylight hours, no illumination is permitted for the ice rink, and the rink is to be removed no later than May 1st of 2023, and the grass restored upon removal.
I have a motion in support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, item number 17, 1954 Long Lake Shore Drive.
We don't even have enough people for the remaining, okay.
Good evening, I am Jacob Park on behalf of Dennis Park, the homeowner, here to represent my father regarding the installment of a generator located on the west side of his home, as shown in the figure above, which would require the variance which is noted in the application.
Questions?
Questions from the board? Then I'll open the public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Crowd.
Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I'll take this, make a motion with regard to the appeal at 1954 Long Lake Shore Drive for the setback variance, I move the variance be approved as requested, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the size of the lot. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason that the generator will be screened, unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, once again, given the layout of the lot and the placement of the home, and it's not self-created. If approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the, the unit from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Support.
I have a motion in support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, have a good evening.
Can we, let's, let's pull, since obviously number, number 18 isn't here, let's, let's do number, let's-
Number 10.
Let's do number 10 at the end of the meeting, which allows us to do number 10, who's also not here. We're going to postpone 18.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, sir.
My name is Norman Stewart, 5571 Wing Lake Road. This is an issue of non-compliance by a neighbor, a nice man, good family man. My name is Norman Stewart, my wife Susan and I have been homeowners of 5571 Wing Lake Road since 1972. When we moved here from Ann Arbor, when we moved here from Ann Arbor, last week I received a notice from the zoning board of appeals that would be ruling on my neighbor seeking approval for a proposed 23-foot radius by 13-foot-high gazebo. I was more than surprised that our neighbor and homeowner at 5505 Wing Lake Road applied for a variance to build a gazebo after it was already built and in use without ZBA approval or input from adjacent homeowners. This first photo, number one, is a photo was taken on the 6th of, 6th of July showing gazebo building supplies delivered to 5505 Wing Lake Road more than 22 weeks prior to the homeowner seeking approval for a proposed gazebo in, at this ZBA meeting tonight. The second photo, number two, was taken last week and shows the proposed gazebo already erected, and the homeowners ordering of building materials and subsequent construction of the gazebo without Bloomfield Township or ZBA building approval demonstrates clear disregard for Bloomfield Township ordinances and procedures. It also demonstrates a lack of concern on the effect this large, out-of-scale structure has on adjacent homeowners' property values on this state of Michigan designated natural beauty road. I strongly oppose this gazebo, as does my wife, and, and we are beyond disappointed that the non-compliant homeowner clearly decided to build first and ask for permission afterwards. This huge gazebo detracts from the scenic quality of the property values in this designated natural beauty road and the adjacent properties, including ours. The third photo is the last photo and deals with an issue that came up two years ago regarding non-compliance. The third photo is a photo taken last week and shows that the shed that the homeowner was approved to build two years ago with ZBA conditions, that the shed be screened from view of adjacent properties by evergreens, the height of 10-foot, the height of the 10-foot shed at the time of planting. As you can see, there is no planting on one side of the shed, and the other token evergreen plantings are only half the height of the shed, and some are dead. This shed consti, this shed constitutes, continues to detract from the scenic quality of this parcel on a designated natural beauty road and the adj, and the adjacent properties, including mine. Thank you, I'm sorry that the person wasn't here to hear it, but it doesn't seem right, just putting the cart before the horse. So, what happens now?
Well, we, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Well, we can discuss this as a board, but-
Do you think this is something that we can, we can decide without, without hearing? I'm, I'm going to make an observation that regardless of what we might do regarding the gazebo, the fact that a shed now three years in existence that was approved and has not been screened leads me to question whether or not any conditions we would impose for the gazebo would be, would be dealt with, and so I'm disinclined to consider the request. Period.
Or deny it.
Well, same, basically the same thing. You're fine with that, okay, all right, Madam Chair, with regard to the permission request for a gazebo at 5505 Wing Lake Road, I'm going to move that the permission request be denied based on the information presented, the applicant has not demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location, the accessory structure is not harmonious to the neighborhood, and given its location and the lack of screening that's been presented that would mitigate that issue, and as a consequence, in the event this motion is approved, the existing structures as they are are to be removed within 30 days of approval of the minutes of this meeting.
Support.
Motion in support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again for your patience.
If you don't mind, we can keep them, it's part of our record.
That's great.
Great, thank you.
Have a good evening, sir.
Have a safe holiday.
We still have item number 18.
Think we can do this one? It's just a generator. It's a tri-level, odds are the mechanicals are on that side of the house because that's the lower level, so it doesn't make any sense to put it anywhere else.
So the left picture looks like we're on top of an air conditioning unit.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, that's where the AC is, maybe that's the generator now.
Okay.
You can't tell, anyway.
Wow, there's not much space either.
No.
It doesn't look like it's screened.
No, it's going to require screening. Madam Chair, with regard to dimensional variance at 2764 Warwick Drive, I'm going to move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested for the proposed generator encroaching into the easterly side yard setback, there just isn't sufficient space, which is why compliance would be unduly burdensome, would end up having to be in a different location on the property substantially away from where the mechanicals are likely located in the property. There is no injustice to adjoining neighbors, although it will require some evergreen screening, unique circumstances of the property, again, I think have been demonstrated because of the style of the home and the location and the minimum amount of space between the side of the house and the lot line, which certainly is not something that would be self-created. In the event this motion is approved, application for unnecessary permits must be made within one year, all permits must be obtained prior to construction, and additional ever, additional evergreen screening will be required to screen the unit from public view and must ex, must meet or exceed the height of the unit at the time of planting.
Support.
Support.
I have a motion in support, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion granted. All right, next board meeting is January 10th, 2023, wow, 2023. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes.
Support?
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.